Okay, we're being recorded. Consider adoption of an urgency ordinance relating to the temporary moratorium on evicting tenants and declaring the ordinance to be an emergency measure to take effect immediately upon adoption. I'd like to turn it over to Dino on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, I'm going to turn over to the city attorney to describe and answer any questions. The purpose of the urgency ordinance is that as we have been discussing the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on our communities, the city managers of the surrounding jurisdictions and the county have all found it to be important to put in place protections for individuals to protect them from eviction during this period where they may be losing income as a result of the pandemic. So, we have looked at surrounding jurisdictions. We've looked at our own community and its unique nature. And the city attorney has prepared the attached ordinance. There have been several modifications made based on input from council members. And I will turn it over to him to discuss and present to the council for a vote. Alex?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, I think Dino covered it pretty well. This is something that you're seeing from many jurisdictions. It's based on Governor Newsom's proclamation 2020, which suspended state preemption over various eviction statutes as well as evictions based on foreclosures. And so what we've done here in order to map as closely as we can to that executive order is put a moratorium on residential and commercial evictions as well as a moratorium based on a foreclosure process, whether that be a judicial foreclosure or, for instance, a foreclosure as permitted under the Davis Sterling Act. One note that I would clarify, and the question came up. If you look at the amended version, the new subdivision 320-day payback period, there was a question as to the last sentence. Does that apply to missed rent payments during the life of this ordinance? And the way I read it, it is. So, but for clarity, what I might suggest from the council inserting into that last sentence would be, and I'll read the last sentence in full. During the 120-day period, the protections against evictions provided for herein shall apply for such tenants, i.e., only for those rent payments deferred prior to the termination of this ordinance. So in other words, the eviction protections would not apply to rents becoming due and payable after the state of emergency has been lifted.
Okay.
And with that, Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. What we're going to do is go methodically through the council first, and then we'll go out for public comment. So I'd like to start with John.
I'm fine with the ordinance. Yeah, can you hear me? This is John Gagliotti. I'm fine with the ordinance with the edits that were just described by council.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry, give me a minute, I'm getting to you. Louise? Sorry, there you are. Louise?
Yes, I'm in agreement with, and I do think that the amendment, as Alex suggested, is more than appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Pat?
Yes, I agree with the amendment, and I think it's a wonderful thing that we're doing. I think it's very much in order. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm looking for you. Kristin, there you are.
There I am.
And she's waving. Kristin?
I agree with the ordinance and the amendments. And yes, this is very good. Thank you very much. Thanks for all that work, Alex and Dino.
My only question is the title. Should it be? I've been watching, looking at the other ordinances, and this is just a little thing. Adding temporary to the moratorium. Section 3 on page 2, I believe. Adding temporary to the beginning. And then it says moratorium on evictions due to non-payment of rent. I would love to see something like for residential and commercial tenants.
Mayor, this is Alex. That's certainly, those are certainly appropriate amendments to the ordinance, and I see no legal objection to them.
Okay, I just want it to be as clear as possible for anyone that may be affected that needs to read it. All right, any other council comments?
This is, this is Pat, and I agree with what you had recommended.
Great. Any other council comments before we go out to the public?
I think it's all good.
All right, let's go out to the public. If you could raise your hand on your, on the side here. We'll grab you as I see you. I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay, thank you. All right, I see no hands, so we're going to close this. I'll come back to the council. All right, council, any last comments, or I can entertain a motion?
This is John Gagliotti. Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
And a comment.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I have a comment.
Okay.
I heard it said that it applied to foreclosures, but I didn't see where it says that in the ordinance. Or maybe that was something else that was being addressed.
To the mayor, if I might, that would be the revised version that you received has the provision for the foreclosures. It's new subdivision D of section 3.
And I did not get that provision.
But Alex, foreclosures are covered by this.
They are.
Okay.
Thank you.
John?
If council member Getzel is fine with supporting the resolution as she's heard it, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution, which is the amended resolution, but also the one that was sent out later today, and then also include the changes that were recommended by the mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, we are all unmuted, or the council is all unmuted. Kim, can you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gagliotti?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindtelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Getzel?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Kerr?
Aye.
And it is unanimously approved. I want to congratulate everybody on taking this very important step to protect our homeowners and our renters. So on that note, we're going to go to the next item of new business, 5B, to discuss the airport district draft environmental assessment for the proposed airfield safety enhancement and provide direction to staff. I'd like to turn this over to Dino.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you tonight is for the purpose of receiving public comment and council comment on the airport's environmental assessment for the proposed airfield safety enhancement project. In order to just frame this matter, as we all know, the airport has developed a master plan and has been working on it for some time. About a year and a half ago, the airport published a draft environmental impact report on that, on that plan and on the proposed airfield safety enhancement project under the California Environmental Quality Act. And the city at that time submitted a comment letter, and the comment letter is in the council packet and available online to the public. The National Environmental Quality Act, or Environmental Protection Act, or NEPA, requires that a separate environmental assessment be done, and that is what is currently out for public comment and which we are going to provide a comment letter to the airport before the deadline. The council need not take action tonight for staff to develop and prepare a letter for the mayor's signature and ultimately for submission for the record to the airport district. However, if council wishes to make a motion to specify and codify some direction to staff, you also have that option based on the way this was agendized. The real purpose for this item being here is so that we can all hear from the public and for council to be able to ask questions as well as the public and to provide direction to staff. I might add that we have on the line tonight with us the chairman, or chairperson of the board of the airport district, Mary Ann Lefell. Chair Lefell is on by phone with us and is prepared to make comments on the board's behalf. And I would be happy to turn it over to her for comment at this time. So, Mary Ann, are you on with us? Kim, let me ask you to unmute everybody. Mary Ann, are you on?
Hi, this is Mary Ann. I'm happy to join you tonight. Thank you for the invitation. Can you hear me fine?
Yes. But before we move forward, we're going to re-unmute everyone except for you.
Okay.
Just so we can hear everything. And Kim, can you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. And do you know which one was Mary Ann?
Yes, I actually renamed her so I could find her again. There she is. Hi, Mary, are you there?
Yeah, it says I'm unmuted.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Mayor, council members, I'm Mr. Pick. I'm excited to give you some really good news. About a week ago, I think I received an email from your mayor, and she invited me to speak to you all this evening. And she also asked if it was possible for us to extend the comment period on the document. This is a federal document. It is not the airport document. So we had to go to the FAA and ask the question. And kind of an unprecedented thing, they came back late yesterday and advised us that they would extend the comment period for two weeks. So the comment period, instead of ending on April 6, it will now end on April the 20th. So that's, I think, extremely good news for everybody. One of the, I think, main concerns that your community had with this plan is the way it had been presented in the past was that there would have to be a connection. There would have to be a connection through Delray Oaks in order to connect with the north side of the airport. And what we were able to do is to strategize, and in the federal document, it states that the desirable connection is still through Delray Oaks, but that at this time, we believe it is not feasible. And so the road will now connect through the city of Monterey on Airport Road, where we have other connections. So I think for most of you, that's extremely good news. And I think I'm happy to be able to deliver that. Along that, what we have to do, if you are familiar with this, this is a mini, mini, mini staged project. And the first part of the project, we have notification that we have received a $10 million grant to begin. That first part of that project is to take the existing 44 hangars that are on the south side of the airport, next to our long-term parking, and those will be taken away. And we will build new hangars on the north side with the access point coming through Airport Road onto the north side. So that's, that's the very first part of this. And we feel like we can make the timeline that FAA has given us even with the two-week extension on the comment period. So with that being said, there'll be 44 new hangars on the north side that are replacing 44 old hangars on the south side. And there are right now seven old hangars on the north side that are really in bad shape. Most of them are leftover from the Second World War. Those will come down, and we will build all new hangars. So there'll be 51 new hangars, all of them replacements for something that is currently existing. The other piece that this part will cover is that we have to scrape away a lot of dirt on the south side, and that dirt will be moved over to the north side to level out so that we can build those hangars. So that's, that's really the first part of this entire huge project that is coming with the modernization of the airport. And I want to be really clear, because I heard some confusion last week when I spoke to another neighborhood group. There is no expansion on this at all, none. Every, the runways are not changing. They're not moving. There's no lengthening. There's no widening. Everything remains the same. And this will make the airport a lot safer. Because right now, the 44 hangars on the south side, a person has to drive in off of Highway 68, access to the hangar, and then taxi way out to the end of the runway and cross the major runway to get to the smaller runway in order to take off. And the same thing when they, when they land. So this is going to give us the opportunity to not have 44 smaller planes crossing the larger runway when we've got commercial aviation coming in and larger jets coming in. So it's, it's a total win, safety-wise, and we're pretty excited about it. The good thing about doing this off of Airport Road, and bear with me, because I've been, I've got some numbers, but they're pretty, pretty easy, I think. Right now, we did a traffic count on Airport Road. And when traffic comes down, what actually ends up coming onto the airport property after it passes through the neighborhoods and passes through everything else, there are about 750 trips coming down through there. And that's an average daily traffic trip. And that includes, right now, to the seven hangars that are already there. The new airport daily trips with 44 relocated hangars and the seven replacement hangars would give us a new count of 72 more trips. And those 72 trips are based on the traffic that we see on a daily basis in and out to our existing 44 hangars. So we also have over there, we've got a lot of outside storage area. And right now, those guys have been extremely busy because of all the trees that have come down. A lot of it is wood storage. So they bring in large pieces of wood, and then they sell it, and they take out either large pieces or smaller pieces for consumer usage. And that results in about 100 trips a day. And most of those are big trucks. We found that most of that is a much larger vehicle. The other thing that is probably, we have not spoken to this minute yet, but that we see that will be going away is the towing operation there. And the towing operation is about 49 trips a day. And in looking at it, those also are really big trucks. A lot of times, it's a big tow truck towing another vehicle. And then it amounts to four or three trips back and forth as people come in to secure their vehicles out of the tow yard. So we, we will eliminate 49 trip, daily traffic trips with the tow yard. So our new daily traffic trip over on the north side of the airport, off of Airport Road, will go from 750 down to 673, which is a daily reduction of 77 trips, many of those larger, larger trucks. So we're pretty excited. We think we've come up with a pretty good solution. It's a win really for Monterey. It gets a lot of the larger truck traffic off of Airport Road and out of that neighborhood. And it does not, does not encourage us to go through Delray Oaks. So those are really the big changes with this document. And this document is a capacity, is not a capacity document. It is a safety document. And as Mr. Pick said, it is required by the federal government that they do a NEPA on top of our CEQA. So now we have, we satisfied the letter of the law with both of the documents. So with that, I'll open it up for questions or comments, or however you would like to handle it.
Wonderful, thank you, Mary Ann. So I'd like to open it to the council first. I do believe everybody's unmuted. So can I please start with John? I'd like to go methodically so we don't accidentally talk over each other. John?
I don't have, yeah, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Louise?
We have to, does the airport have to do an amendment CEQA since you have modified the proposal?
No, we do not. Because this is, this was in the original proposal, and it was considered. So all of the tests and all of the studies of everything were in there. And this is all on land that is already disturbed. It already has something on it. So we're not, we're not going out into anything that has pristine land. It's, everything is already got concrete on it or has some type of a building on it.
Louise, was that it?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Pat?
Yes, I'd like to know how close these hangars will be to the Delray Oaks property lines.
Well, I cannot show you the map, but they are not on, they're not close to the property line.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Kristin?
Okay, so I did hear about trees coming down. So I've got two questions. One, are you finished with the trees coming down? Number, that's number one. And number two is, how is the Casanova Oak Knoll Association dealing with this road coming through the airport? Have they approved it?
First of all, with the trees down, we are through with the trees down. And when we did our first study, we did a, oh gosh, I think it's a topographical study. But there is a technical term of how high many trees are. So they found that we were in violation with, with the landing vision of how high some of the trees were. So some were topped. We were also told by Monterey Fire Department, who our contract is with, similar to our police department with you all, that we had to clear brush and some trees away from our fence line to secure our property in case there was a fire. And FAA and TSC required that we clear, clear out a lot of brush along the fence lines that had been allowed to grow up, and it was too, too close, and it was also a fire hazard. So now everything is complete. And what was the next question, Kristin?
Oh, about the Casanova Oak Knoll Association and getting that road through, you know, through there. Has that already been blessed, I should say?
No. The Casanova Oak Knoll Association has not met, to my knowledge, since we released the document for public comment on March 6. And we, we had a committee that met with the president, and I believe the vice president or member-at-large, twice. And they were aware of the fact that this was the new recommendation that we believed would, would come out of this. And we talked about the reduction in the truck traffic and in the trip traffic. But they have not, at this time, met to give us back any, any feedback. So hopefully, they will be able to get together in the next couple of weeks and invite us in like you all are, and we'll be able to discuss it with them.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, you know, you're being a good neighbor now. So that's, that's really good to hear, and I hope it works out.
Thank you. I, I'm, I'm hopeful that with the reduction in the type of trucks that are on that road and with the overall reduction, that they'll feel like they've had a pretty good win out of it.
Absolutely. That's, that's good to hear. That's all the questions I have.
Thanks, Kristin. I just needed one point of clarity. You said there's 750 daily trips currently?
Currently.
Okay. And then with the 44 relocated, there would be an additional 72? And then with the towing, with the towing operation, that 49 of those would be gone? Am I correct? Okay. And so I thought I heard you say the new daily trips would be 673, whereas I think it's really 773.
No, what you missed was a category that was the outside storage area, where I talked about the large trees coming in and the wood going back out.
Okay.
And that has 100 trips a day with trucks coming in and trucks going out. So that's how we got to 673.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And I just want to be really clear. You said that there will be no expansion on the north side of the Airport Road.
There is no expansion of the runways.
Okay.
At all.
At all? Okay.
Of the runway, yeah.
Okay. None?
Well, there's been a lot of confusion that we were moving a runway or that we were expanding a runway, and we are not doing that. That is nowhere in any part of this document.
Okay, interesting, okay. And what is the estimated length of time of this particular component of your plans?
We have been notified that they have $10 million that they are holding for us. And so the design portion of this has already started. And we're doing that at risk with our money to get it started so that we can hold on to that $10 million as we went through this process, which is usually what we do. We were usually fortunate enough to have a cash bank stored up Uh, we, we're usually fortunate enough to have a cash bank, um, stored up that we can go ahead and before we receive grant funds, we can, uh, start planning and doing a lot of the, uh, legal work, which we have done. So the start on this, um, with the movement of dirt, I would assume would be sometime probably early fall.
And do you have an estimate of the duration, the full duration of the project?
I do not. I, I do not. The, uh, it will take longer because the dirt will not ever leave our property. So the dirt will come from the south side to the north side. It will not go out on anybody's highway, but it has to pass over our runways in order to get from south side to north side. So it takes a little longer because we have to, um, if we've got incoming planes, they have to hold the truck traffic with the dirt to allow planes to land or to take off. So it's a little tricky of how they do it and it does add time to it. But the good news is it's not impacting anybody's neighborhood. It's all on airport.
Um, will that, uh, work be done at night?
Uh, more than likely, yes.
Okay. And, and, and you're making noise mitigations for the folks that live on, near the north side?
Uh, we will do that, yes.
Okay, great. Um, and then the last question I have for now is, um, thank you so much for asking for the extension for public comment. Uh, my concern is for our elderly folks that may not have computers or access to, um, the library right now. Uh, would you, um, consider asking for an extension if we continue to be in shelter in place for longer than the two week period?
I think the, um, as I said earlier, is pretty unprecedented to get any type of a, of an extension. And I believe the feeling is that within this period of time with, as we all get used to this new normal, that we will, um, be able to work out ways. I did a, I did a neighborhood presentation last week and people sat around the room, but none of us were on top of each other. So I think, you know, if people put together a group and need someone to come in, um, to discuss it, I'm very happy to do that. And, um, you know, we'll work through it. But I do not see another extension, no.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I would not support an in-public or in-person meeting at this time. Um, so tho, those are my questions for now. I'd like to go out to the public. Um, Kim, can you help me, um, identify hands up, public comment?
If you're interested in making a public comment, please go to the right part of your screen under participants, click on your name and raise your hand. There's been a couple of questions coming through on chat, but they need to be in public comment.
I see, um, I see Karen Harris and I'm unmuting you. Can you, so same rules apply. Please let us know who you are, where you live, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lefell, for coming and answering our questions. And I really appreciate the extension. I was, I have a couple of questions and one concern, um, to start with. My concern was when the trees were cleared out, there was really noisy and it started early in the morning. And it would have been nice to have some forewarning. I mean, it was on a Friday, took up the whole morning. And if I was to have a party out there on my patio, it would have been terrible because they went back and forth, back and forth, over and over with their tractors and the saws and everything. But I'm glad that the work was done. I just wish that, that we had some notification. Um, the next thing is, um, could you talk a little bit more explained about the, the service access road? It looks like it's going to be on the north side. And I noticed that in the diagrams, there's a lot of, uh, environmental impacts on that side, but it looks like there was no road going to be there. So I was wondering why is there, um, mitigation being done? And, um, I guess that's it right now. Thank you.
Uh, the, well, and I'm, I'll relate back on the issue of the trees. I'm not quite sure we had a contract out, so I'm not quite sure how, how they did that, but I will, uh, let them know. Um, I think the access road, if you look at that access road now, there's a small section of it that is still, uh, it's, uh... Are you there? It, it packed dirt and our, our vehicles use it. The police use it, the fire truck goes up around that way sometimes, and our service vehicles use it. But in order to accommodate the, um, the dirt moveal and removal, uh, they're going to complete just, um, putting some type of a harder surface on that so that our service vehicles can get up around there a little more easily. But the road, the road is there and it's being used daily by our service vehicle.
Thank you. Um, Dennis?
Yes, I just, uh, wanted to say thank you, Mary Ann. Again, the airport board seems to have, uh, tried to accommodate. It's a, I think the city of Delray Oaks is trying to be a good neighbor and clearly the airport has listened to us and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Um, Kim?
Oh, the other Kim.
I'm sorry, Kim Shirley.
The other Kim, yeah.
Excuse me.
Okay. Um, thank you, um, Mary Ann Lefell for attending and I also really appreciate the fact that, um, you're emphasizing that the north side access will be through the Airport Road. I, I do still have concerns because of your documents, um, that I've seen, um, mostly with the capital improvement plan. It shows you still list a very expensive north side road connection. Um, and so I'm wondering why you have that listed, if, if your new plans are to just go through Airport Road. Um, and then I also would like you to clarify in the environmental assessment where you talk about, um, Delray Gardens Drive not being feasible at this time, that's the only alternative that's mentioned, um, that's saying, you know, not this time it's feasible. So it makes me feel like later down the road, maybe that will be something that you look towards. Um, and that the third thing is, is again, that 1,600 foot of really substantial northeast access road that you're building, um, seems like it's in preparation for, again, it seems way, way more expensive and, and, uh, kind of over the top in terms of just hauling construction debris. So I'm wondering if you could speak to why that 16-foot road is so substantially, um, going to be built as far as, you know, 24 feet wide, uh, three foot gutters, three foot shoulders? Um, why just that portion has to be so, so, so substantially built?
Okay, so if I understand, one is that in the capital improvement plan, it still shows the, um, the old road. Is that, was that what you're asking me?
It, it shows that in 2021, you plan on building a north side, um, access road.
Right. But with, and now is or in our capital improvement plan, but with this NIPA document, once this is approved, it'll come back to the board and the board will, uh, ratify it and bring it back so that the capital improvement plan then will be, um, amended to show that the traffic will come from the Airport Road and from the Monterey side. So it's just, it's a, it's a step-by-step project, Kim, and it's got all these pieces that one has to be finalized before we can change the other. And it just, it goes kind of like a domino. But this is, this document from FAA clearly states that it is not a Delray Oaks road, even though they found that to be the best solution in the beginning.
Is that why it was stated, not, not at this time?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And then can you address again that, the northeast access road that you, you plan to build that's pretty expensive? Why, why just that portion?
Are you talking about just that little small road that connects our service road up to around the north side?
Yes, that 1,600 foot portion.
Okay, so that is, that is within the airport property.
Yes.
And what, what we find now is that if we have inclement weather, it's, it's difficult for our service vehicles to get up there. It's a pretty steep grade and so it needs to have some pretty substantial drainage on it, which is why it's got the gutters and the, all of the work is being done with it. But it's also, it's not safe right now for when they do need to access it. So this is just to make it safer for our vehicles and our workers that they can, they can get up there. It's also, for instance, if the police get a call on the backside and they're patrolling, they can actually get across there a lot quicker than if they have to go across the runway and rate it and wait if we have a heavy traffic, um, day with airplanes coming in or going out. So it's just, it's a, it's a safety feature.
Okay, and just one more thing. You, you had mentioned that the only places that were going to be built were places that were already disturbed. And I know that, you know, on the plan, there are places where, um, debris is going to be, you know, dirt, extra dirt is going to be placed. And there is definitely some mitigation for some endangered flowers that occur on the north side. And so I, I just feel like that should be mentioned, that there is going to be some, some disturbance, you know, some disturbance of some natural habitat there.
Okay, I, I will note that down. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't hear you, Allison.
Sorry. Scott Donaldson.
Yes, thank you. And, and thank you, Mary Ann, for what I think is just fantastic news for Delray Oaks. Um, but a, as I see the elimination of the road, I think the next main issue is going to become the noise. Councilmember Lindtale asked a great question about the location of those hangers and I believe you said they weren't close to the boundary of Delray Oaks. But, um, could you also speak to the orientation of those hangers and the size?
Oh, well, let me see if I can find a map here and I will discuss that, or I may have to have you meet with one of the airport people. Um, I'm looking at this right now. The hangers would be next to the smaller taxiway, which is the, uh, runway 28 right. And so, um, I don't know how to explain this. Do you know where our solar farm is?
I, I do. Um, and I guess what I'm looking for is the orientation, will the opening of the hangers face towards Delray Oaks or away from it? And, and size, if you could talk to maybe what can be put inside those hangers, number of aircraft, whatever, uh, plans to be going in there?
Uh, a few of the hangers will be a little larger because we have found over the years that there is a need for, uh, space for larger aircraft. Many of our residents have been able to, um, purchase things that are larger than they initially had. We have an ordinance that you cannot conduct business out of those hangers. So for instance, uh, if somebody wanted to have a, I don't know, an auto body place or something like that, none of that is allowed. It is for aviation purposes. And so the hangers will be between the solar farm and that taxiway. So they're not, they're not against the Delray Oaks fence. They are further, they're right along the taxiway.
Okay, and then the opening, like I was asking before, is that, is that opening away from Delray Oaks or, or towards it?
Yeah, the, um, they'll face south, so they'll face toward the runway and they will not face toward Delray Oaks.
Okay, and then the size, can you give a general description of maybe square footage or, or, I, I don't know, um, just anything that would give a, an estimate of size?
I can't. I'm sorry. I can get back to you with an answer, but I, I, I can't. I would just be making something up and that's not my nature.
Okay, that's all the questions. Thank you once again.
Oh, you are welcome. I'm excited to bring good news.
We're, we're excited to hear it.
You're muted.
So, so to be clear, the question is the, the actual size of the hangers that I need to get back to you on, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Um, Gary Krieger? Oops, trying to mute you. There you go.
Believe you did. All right, uh, good evening. I, um, Mary Ann, I have, thanks for being here. I have two questions. The first one's fairly straightforward. Uh, the dirt being moved, the, uh, the plumes from the contaminated dirt and all the toxins from the Old Navy, uh, air station that used to be there that was cleaned up a few years ago, is any of that dirt going to have, uh, any issues with that, uh, oil contamination being moved around? That's one question. Uh, the second question was, the mayor had asked about the development on north side and you started talking about runways and, and I have to tell you, I haven't heard anyone being confused about runways being extended for a couple of years, really, not, not in any of our conversations. I think what most people are interested in is knowing what the airport board is thinking about the non-aviation development on the north side once all this is done. Understand this phase is, you know, aviation and A triple F and, and you rely on the runways and the, and the terminal, and that's all safety stuff. That's great, you know, it's, I do, if it's got to, gotta do it. But the issue I think that, uh, is what, that's more on people's mind is the, what the airport board is thinking about the non-aviation that's in the longer range plans and what you're currently thinking about that. Thank you.
Uh, you're welcome. So the toxins from the dirt, obviously before we start moving that dirt, that dirt will have to be tested. And so at that point, we'll know what's in that dirt. But that dirt right now, are you familiar with where the firehouse is right now?
Yes.
Okay, so that dirt is coming from that area that's, um, let's see, if you're facing the runways and you're facing the firehouse and on the right-hand side where those, uh, current hangers are, that's where that dirt will get scraped away because there's also, we're in violation of a, um, of some type of FAA regulation where that, that area is too high for, we should be equal, um, level with the runway and we're not. So this is going to fix that and level that area out so that when we build the new terminal, we'll be at the same, same level as the runway. And, um, I don't know, until we get in there and do the soil samples and do that sort of thing, honestly, Gary, we won't know, but...
Okay, I mean, I know how those plumes move around, but, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and we won't do anything to jeopardize our neighbors or our, our employees. Um, we have absolutely have had no discussions and we have nothing on our horizon to do anything for non-aviation on the north side of that airport. None. We've got our hands full with what we've got to do that is aviation, um, oriented and it's going to take us several years to get all of that done.
Okay.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm, um, and I do believe I have, there's one more, oh, excuse me, there's two. Kim, can you help me? I can't seem to...
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute him. I'm not sure.
There you go, there you go.
Thank you. Yes, this is actually Ken Rutherford on Stephen Elliott's computer. Um, thanks so much for coming, Mary Ann Lefell. Uh, I guess I have a, a question about the not feasible at this time language that's being used, um, with respect to the road. I guess I would be more comfortable and find it happier news if it was language that's no longer feasible and will not be considered at any time with respect to the road. and will not be considered at any time with respect to access through Delray Oaks. Not being feasible at this time seems to me that in the future, that's a road that would be considered and access through Delray Oaks that would be considered. Um, I'm also concerned that the 1,600-feet improvement on the northeast service road terminates right about the location where access was initially intended through Delray Oaks on a Delray Garden road. So that concerns me as well. And maybe you can say something to help me with my fears on that. Um, also, I'm just curious, because this was a safety issue, how many commercial flights have actually been impacted with the general aviation crossing over the runway? And is there documentation of how many aircraft actually cross over the runway on a daily basis and what type of impact that's having? Because we're talking about a 13 and a half million-dollar project just on the first phase. So that's quite a substantial expenditure to just move the general aviation, relocate the general aviation facilities. Um, also, though, I noticed that in the, uh, the, um, the cost for the project initially, the first phase, was almost $2 million for a north-side east vehicle service road extension. And that seems to be the very first expenditure for this first phase. And I'm just curious about that, if you can enlighten me on the need for that being the first phase. If all of the construction material and debris is going to be staying on the airport, not leaving the airport, and you won't be using that northeast service road for the construction, what's the need for that expenditure and improvement of the northeast service road, particularly the 1,600 feet that seems to end right about where you initially wanted to come through Delray Oaks? And those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, so back to your "not feasible at this time", that's an FAA, uh, term. And I, I believe it is the term that they decided to use because of the fact that we were not using the route that was determined to be the most desirable. And so it is just a way to say that at this point in time, it is not going to happen. So we've switched to Plan B and studied it and are going to live with it. And I don't know, Ken, I don't know what else I can tell you other than I'm, I'm about as honest as they come sometimes to a fault. If, uh, I have, I, there is nothing in anybody's mind that they are going to make a road to Delray Oak. Period. End of the story. We are going another route and a route that we feel is a successful route and a win for the city of Monterey to reduce truck traffic. So that's, uh, it's all I can tell you. It's FAA's term, not mine. The 1,600-foot road, the reason why it's so important is because as they use that small service road, they will use that to take, um, uh, equipment and things up to the other side. And our people use it a lot. We're going to have quite a bit of traffic going across the ends of our runways here. And this is just another way to move dirt and equipment up around there. And it needs to be made safer before we get into this project. And I don't know, I, I can't, nothing in California is cheap, unfortunately. So 13 and a half million to do this does seem like a lot of money. But when you're making something safer, if you somehow save one life, 13 and a half million is nothing. And I don't have numbers on how many times a day somebody has to wait for a plane. I've actually been in a plane that had to wait for, um, a good half an hour while we were trying to get to the small runway. But honestly, I, I don't have the numbers.
Thank you.
Did that answer all of your questions, Ken?
It did. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, Debbie?
Okay, I'm unmuted. Uh, first of all, I just, yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank Mary Ann for filling in all these questions. And there's been quite a few, but I just have one, one quick one. Actually, there's a.
Debbie, Debbie, can I ask you, if you're on a phone, can you get closer to the microphone? You're a little garbled.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just, just a couple of questions regarding safety and noise. Uh, do we currently have limits on, on flight schools based out of the airport? And do you foresee, you know, any additional or new, uh, flight schools, you know, with, with new hangars going in? And how do we control that?
Okay, first of all, the hangars that are going in are replacement hangars. So none of that will encourage any more traffic than what we have right now. There's nothing that is adding capacity to this. So it's just replacing, um, apples for apples, hangars for hangars. The flight school is under a contract, and the flight school has some rules. But we have found that now that one of their members moved on, that for the most part, they are, they are following the rules. And I believe they have 30-minute or one-hour lessons at a time. So if it's a good day for flying and someone has a 30-minute lesson, they may be up and down and back around. And then the next person is up and back and down around. But it's all in the same plane. So it appears, and I had this question myself one day, it appears one plane is just going round and round. And in actuality, it is, but it may have had three or four students in it during that period of time. So, you know, other than that, I, I can't tell you, um, I can't tell you much about it, although they are in, they have not been in violation of their contract.
Okay, I appreciate that. It, um, it just seems like sometimes there are, are more flights than other times. And maybe it is because of weather, but, um, thank you, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Are there any other, oh, excuse me, Claudia?
Yes, hi. This has been a really good meeting, and thank you. I, I just want to thank you also, I hadn't heard it mentioned, but for clearing out along the, um, the fence that borders the airport property in Delray Oaks. But I did want to mention, and I know you mentioned it was because it was considered hazardous and a fire hazard, that my neighbors have been riding the airport for years now to have that cleared up, and nothing has been done. And so as, um, you know, you're a good neighbor, I was wondering if after now, now, and going on from here, if you will continue to keep that clear? Because it's been years and nothing's ever been done. So I was just, um, just, it would be great if they would continue to maintain that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. And I will pass on to them that you're appreciative and you'd like to see it kept that way. I think, you know, you have, there are rules that we have to follow when we're doing any of that, and we have to apply, and we have to get permission. And so one of the people you can say thank you to, I think, was TSA because they told us that we didn't have a good line of sight along our fence line. And the second was the City of Monterey firefighters, who also said, hey, clean it out because it's a fire hazard. So, um, we are much more aware of it, and our maintenance people are much more aware of it now. And it's like anything, once you do all the hard work, it's a heck of a lot easier to keep it up on a regular basis. I will pass on to them that they need to make continual sweeps down through there and keep it trimmed back.
Great, because it was maintained at one time. It's not, you know, it, so we, we appreciate it keeping, keeping it maintained from now on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, are there any other public comments? I want to, I'm not seeing any hands.
No.
No? Okay. So, um, I would like.
Karen Harris is raising her hand. Sorry.
Can you, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks, Kim.
Hi.
There we go.
I just wanted to ask a follow-up question about the toxic dirt removal. Uh, is it anywhere, are the hangars that exist there now, is that anywhere near where the plume originated from?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, um, hear the beginning of that. Could you repeat it?
Uh, I was wondering about the dirt that's going to be removed. I just wanted to follow up on that as to where the plume, the groundwater plume, the toxic plume, uh, was that anywhere near, the source of it, anywhere near where those hangars are? The dirt will be removed?
No, it's on a much higher, um, higher ground. So it is not where any of, of the airport drainage has ever gone, even when the Navy was there. It's not, it's not on that side of the airport.
Oh, great. Thank you. I feel much better.
You will. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through to make sure.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment now and turn it over to, does Dino, Dino have a question or a comment?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Chair Luffel, I just want to thank you very, very much for, uh, for your time tonight and your clarifying answers. I know for me, it's been illuminating. I was not aware of, of what you shared this evening, and, and it's welcome news. So my, I just want to summarize my, my takeaways before I ask a question. Uh, public comment on the EA is extended to April 20th. Uh, the airport has changed the access plan for the north side to not include a access road through Delray Oaks, but rather to have the access to the hangars and, uh, the north side come through the existing airport road through Monterey with a net reduction in traffic based on the, uh, the planned movement and redistribution of, of businesses there. And so, so I want to thank you for all of that. And we will, we will capture, uh, some of this in the letter that we, uh, prepare for the mayor's signature that comes back to you to codify our understanding of what the airport's plans are. My question is, can you address the future location of the fire station? There was concern that it was going to be on the north side with access required through Delray Oaks to respond to areas of Monterey that Monterey Fire covers. And so I'm, I'm curious what the plan is for the fire station going forward. Thank you.
So at this point, with the changes that have come on this piece, with the hangars and with the, um, uh, relocation of some of our businesses and, and the cessation of some of our businesses, the plan is to, at this point, with FAA, leave the fire station on the north side. But the access to that fire station will be on property, which means if they get a fire call, they have to come out of the station and come across the hangar, the, uh, taxiway, and then come out and go out Olmsted Road the way they do now. We are working with FAA, and we hope after we get into this portion of it, that we will get permission to, we think we've located a spot on the south side where we could actually, um, move the fire station to, so that it will be closer to the terminal and be closer to Highway 68, which would better fulfill the needs of the city of Monterey. Because their concern is that they've got Ryan Ranch and Fisherman's Flats that they need to cover. And if we don't have a, a good accessibility with our fire station, they're going to have to build a station. So it would make a lot of sense for our community tax-wise that approximately 91% of the dollars used to build a new fire station would actually come from FAA, and only 9.4% would come from our, our passengers on their passenger facility charge. So it's actually, it's a, it's a huge win for the community if we can pull it off. But if not, the fire station will stay on the north side, but without a road through Delray Oak. So it would not have any access at all to Delray Oaks other than to come across the runway, out Olmsted Road, up 68, and to 18.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we're closing public comment, and I'd like to come back to the council and go back one by one if there's any last comments or questions. So I'd like to start with John.
No, this has been really informative. No question.
Great, thank you. Louise?
Um, and thank you very much, Mary Ann, for coming and addressing all the concerns. Uh, I really am glad to hear that you are seriously considering putting the fire station on the south side. I think that's a win-win for everybody. And appreciate that you are working with us to give us a nice terminal and, uh, good service, because I really enjoy flying out of here. I like my lifestyle here, too, so it's kind of a balance of both. But thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louise. Pat?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for coming, Mary Ann. You really clarified many things, and I'm delighted that you are considering going through Monterey rather than Delray Oaks. I do, however, have a couple of questions. You seem uncertain, at least with the information you have with you, as to the size of the hangars. But if they're replacement hangars, would they not be the same size as the existing hangars?
Uh, Pat, I, I don't want to answer because I don't want to answer wrong. I know that some of them, or most of them, will be the same size. But I do believe that we anticipate that a, a, a couple of them will be larger because of the clientele that we have and the type of airplanes that they have. And there's a need for slightly larger ones. Those that are there now are 71, um, about 70 years old and 50 years old, depending on which row you're in. And so they're just, they're actually, they're falling apart. They're in bad, bad shape. And they were much smaller because the planes were smaller then.
So what is the maximum number of planes that you can house right now?
That's a good question. I don't know, because we've got 51 of ours. The Navy Flying Club has a couple. And then we have a, uh, we have a private individual who owns several hangars and leases them out. I honestly, I don't know that answer. I can get back to you with that.
Okay, maybe if you could provide it, uh, Dino, with that information, I'd appreciate it. As well as, I believe you're providing Scott and perhaps Dino also with the sizes of the new hangars versus the sizes of the existing hangars. And so we could get some, some kind of an idea of the increase in planes after this is all completed.
Okay, I want to be clear, we're not adding any hangars. We're only replacing hangars. So there is not anything in here that says that we're going to increase the amount of planes. Not at all. We're, we're going to accommodate the larger planes that we have that sometimes just, uh, go down by the, um, Jet Center, and they park down there. But they would like to have hangars to get into, and we've got several of those. And we also have people with, uh, smaller planes that want to be able to pull their cars in when they leave and do things like that. So, but there is nowhere, any place, honestly, that we are saying we're going to add planes. So, but there is nowhere, any place, honestly, that we are saying we're going to add planes and hangars. Nowhere.
Is there any restriction as to the number of flying clubs that could be there? At the airport?
There's just the Navy Flying Club and it's been there forever.
Oh, I thought that there were two flying clubs there.
It's my understanding there's just the Navy Flying Club.
Okay, but still, is there any restriction as to the number that can be accommodated at the airport?
Uh, no, I think the restriction would be more the size of where we would put them. And, and everything that I've ever looked at in any of our plans, we don't have anything where we would be putting more flying clubs.
Okay, so we could have more flying clubs than are existing right now?
No, that is not what I said. I don't believe that there, anywhere in our 20-year plan is there any mention of having additional flying clubs. And are, are you maybe also talking about flight schools?
Yeah, that is exactly. I've got the wrong terminology, but flight schools is exactly what I'm talking about. Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay, well, we, we are, I forget what it's called, Part 139 or something. We are required, we require our tenant, our master tenant, the Jet Center, we require them to actually do their best to have a flight school on our property because there's such a shortage of pilots internationally, nationally. And we've, we have had such a groundswell of support for that flight school that it's really, it's, it's been something really good that the community has really embraced. But one flight school in my time on the board has one went out of business because it didn't have enough students. And the other one stays busy, but not busy every day, which is why you see some days more flights than others. But there's no plan to have another flight school or flying club on that airport.
Okay, how does the number of flight schools compare Monterey, say, to Marina?
I have no idea what, what Marina has. I couldn't tell you. I don't know.
Okay, well, thanks ever so much for coming tonight and I'm so delighted that your plans do not include coming through Delray Oaks. And thank you so much.
It's always nice when you can bring good news.
Absolutely so.
Thanks, Pat. Kristen?
Well, I, I mirror everyone's comments on the council and the public. Mary Ann, thank you for being the board chair. You've done an excellent job tonight. And I, it's unfortunate that we didn't have a meeting like this about a year or two ago. Because, you know, what people don't know, then rumors go around and it's kind of like playing that telephone where someone tells somebody and somebody tells something else and before you know it, they're going to take out a house on Delray Oaks and put a road through there, you know? It's, it's pretty amazing, the rumors that I have heard from so many people. And, and, you know, it's kind of like there, if, without knowing what's going on, there's a lot of fear, just like what we're experiencing now with the coronavirus. You know, people, they, they hear things and they become afraid. And, you know, you're going to build a hangar right next to the fence, right next to my home. And it, it's pretty amazing, some of the rumors that I've heard. So I, I hope that if rumors continue, that we can have another meeting like this with, with you, Mary Ann, because you've done a, a great job, you know, giving us good information and accurate information. And Dino, your summary is excellent. And I think it, it covered all of our concerns. So anyway, that's where I stand. Thank you, Mary Ann, again. And thanks for being a good neighbor. We really appreciate you.
No, thank you. I want to be able to see you all in Safeway and not have to slouch down the other aisle.
Very true.
So I just have a couple of clarifications. One was, the flight schools are under your responsibility?
They are not, they are a sub-tenant of our Jet Center.
Okay. And back to the dirt by the former, or where the ARF is now. I know that you have done tests for, is it PFAs?
PFAS, yes.
Okay, PFAS. And my concern is, many of them come from firefighting exercises? Is there some kind of a notification process about the testing results and/or if there are potential toxic items in that dirt? Again, is there a notification process for those of us that live within a certain amount of area?
We are, we are, we have a gentleman or a company under contract right now, which is doing a study on that. And once that is finished, it will be a public document. So at this point, we have no idea. If you, you've lived here long enough, I think, to remember that we have, we inherited all of those old wells over on the north side of the airport. And the Army Corps of Engineers spent 20 years cleaning those and monitoring those. And I can't remember how long ago, but it's been since I was on the board that we actually had the report out on that, that they had cleaned them to the point that it was, it was not potable, but that it was no longer harmful. So that came, and I can't remember and I apologize, that's sometime within, I think, the last five years, that they finished that 20-year monitoring. So since then, of course, the concern came with the PFAS, which is on every fire truck. They actually have it on the fire trucks in a special container. And it is, it, it has been found to be the most effective way to put out a fire on an aircraft. It is by far the standard that they've used. So what, what we'll find, I don't know. And what's interesting is that we have not had any fires of aircraft that I can remember or that anyone can remember. But they do have to do training with it and they have done training with it on the airport property. So that is everywhere, we had to mark everywhere that we knew they had been, they had tested. We went back to our old firemen and our old fire chief, I don't mean by age, but they have been there in the past and asked them if they knew of any places, any training or any usage had been. So we think we were able to mark all of the places where it could possibly have been used and those areas were tested. So we're just waiting on the results.
Okay, but you, that will be part of your testing? When you indicated that you were going to test the dirt before you moved it, would the PFASs be part of that?
There was, there has been no indication from anybody that that dirt that's going to be moved in this phase had any testing or any usage there at all. Well, they all, they always do what's called, I think, core drilling. So they'll do all of that before they move any dirt and they'll do testing for different things. But the PFAS testing at this point is done on that airport. We're just waiting on the results.
Okay, so no testing for PFASs will be done on that potential dirt that would be moved to the north side?
To my, to my knowledge, the answer is no.
Okay. Of course, I'm very concerned about the frog pond and any leakage. So any of that dirt coming over would, would be of great concern for us. And just two other things, and it's actually more of a confirmation from you, please? I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly. You stated there will be no additional hangars. It's simply replacement. Is that correct?
We, we have seven old hangars on the north side. Those will be demolished and replaced.
Yep.
And the 40, and the 44 hangars on the south side will be demolished and new 44 hangars built on the north side.
So there will be no additional hangars, other than those 51?
That's correct.
Great. And then the last one, if you could please confirm, I heard you say there will be no road through Delray Oaks ever?
There will be no road through Delray Oaks that I could possibly imagine why we would need a road through Delray Oaks.
Can you iter, can you iterate ever? There will be no road ever?
Allison, I'm going to be on the board four more years if I'm re-elected. There will be other boards and other FAA and other community needs 30, 40 years from now and I'll be long gone. I don't know what they'll do, so can I tell you that never, ever, ever will they do that? But there is no plan in anything now in our 20-year document that will include a road to Delray Oaks.
Okay, I'll take that. Any other comments, council, Dino? All right. Okay, well, Mary Ann, thank you so much for coming and sharing all this wonderful news and, and all the details and answering all of our questions. It's very good news. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And I think, you know, I just want to, you know me, I love jobs. I really think that to move this forward right now with the uncertainty in our community and with how many people are going to be out of work and without work, that if we can get this started this fall, that it will be such a win for the community to have a, a $10 million project coming in. And we're, we're actually, we're waiting for the weather to release on a contract that we gave out last year for fixing the runways. They're resealing the existing runways. So you're going to see that work get started and that's about a $3 million project. So it's kind of nice to have almost $15, $16 million coming in, in, in jobs for local people. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right, we're going to move on to the staff reports. City manager report is first.
Thank you, Mayor. So my, my report's going to be brief. I just want to, to highlight for, for the public mainly that City Hall and your city staff is doing everything we can to prepare our community and help and work with our community to, to get through the, the COVID-19 pandemic that, that we're all experiencing. City Hall has been closed for a little over a week. We are operating virtually from our homes, Karen, Kim and I. Public Works is out in the, in the, in the city maintaining our infrastructure and making repairs as needed while avoiding as much human contact as possible to, to avoid contraction of the virus. Our police department continues to be my primary concern in terms of their mission to keep safe our city and serve our residents and our businesses while at the same time not contracting the virus and staying mission-ready. Chief Hoin and his command staff have worked diligently to emplace mitigation measures and protocols for their operations, such as not rotating vehicles, separation of shifts physically, as well as how to engage the, the public and, and mitigate, in order to mitigate contraction of the virus. So far, we're, we're in great shape, thankfully. Everyone is safe. Everyone is operating. We are answering the phones at City Hall from home. Karen Menemee is, is, is answering the phones primarily. And we're all checking our email accounts and, and staying in touch by, by video chat such as Zoom. We're putting out daily, we're receiving daily situation reports from the county and we're posting those on our webpage. I'm publishing updates periodically to our email list. And if you're not signed up, you can go to the city webpage and, and sign up for those. It's the same list we use to push out our council agendas. And I encourage you all to use the, the city website as, as a, as a trusted source of information. What we're finding in this, in this period is, as, as the pandemic spreads and it will continue to spread for some time before it ebbs, there's a lot of anxiety, there's a lot of fear. And, and there is no shortage of, of information and misinformation that people are, are consuming. So part of our job is, is communication and trusted information. And our website continues to be a, a source that I hope you, you all use. And to the extent that you find it inadequate or counterintuitive in any way, please inform us and we will make changes to it to suit your needs. The websites for CDC, the state and the county are reachable through the city website. So we're trying to make it, as is every city around us, a, a, a source and a locus of, of trusted, verified information regarding the pandemic. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that the council will, will report the same. But from your staff perspective, it's wonderful to see the city taking care of each other. Our residents and our businesses taking care of each other. Being gracious, being calm in the face of, of, of what will hopefully be something we never see again in our lifetimes. And so we, we remain reachable and, and we're, are the focus of our, certainly my time, chief's time, is, is on helping us navigate the COVID-19 pandemic. Simultaneously, we, we are continuing to do roadwork, do work in our parks, police, and, and answer, answer questions from our public regarding, regarding permitting, accounts payable and accounts receivable. So there is a certain amount of, of city business that does continue in spite of our closures here. And, and I just want to publicly thank now both Karen and Kim, as well as chief and our, on our police department and, and Ron for everything they are doing during this time to, to keep our city functioning. That's, that's the main, the gist of my report and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions about Dino's report? All right, we'll move on to council reports. John?
So we had, actually, our Monterey one is next week. The, the Water Master was canceled and, and the FORA board, regular board meeting was canceled last week as well as the Habitat Conservation Management. So I really, I have nothing, not until, not until next week.
Thank you. Louise?
Just a few. I did attend the Veterans Council meeting, the strategic planning session that we had on the 3rd of March, which was really great. Four-door area retired soldiers council. There was interest. I'm not sure how many participants here. But the VA clinic will only allow access through the back Oceanside entrance to the lobby. And they will be screening people as they come in, as well as at the check-in kiosks, there'll be some health screening questions done to ensure, minimize the spread or prevent the spread of this virus. I attended the mosquito abatement district meeting on the 10th of March and the Ambac meeting on the 11th of March. One of the things of interest, which I provided a copy of to Dino, is they are suggesting that the cities consider sending out a volunteer, not an ordinance, but a volunteer ban to the businesses and to make residents aware of the dangers of balloons for our environment. and to make residents aware of the dangers of balloons for our environment, especially the ocean environment, especially the Mylar balloons. Which is very, very interesting and it's one way we can further protect our environment. I just got a notice that the AMAG meeting in April has been canceled and I've not heard yet. And so is the United Veterans Council meeting, which will be next week, actually tomorrow. And I'm not heard yet on the Retiree Council or on the mosquito abatement district April meetings. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Pat?
Thank you. The Community Human Services canceled their February meeting. Then they set up an emergency meeting, which was called for a different day. And I was unable to attend that because I had a doctor's appointment. Seaside sanitation, they allowed me to call in, so I didn't have to be so close to everybody there.
Pat, we lost your microphone. We can't hear you.
Oh, you now?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, I know what the problem was. We spent lots of money at seaside sanitation. We approved a construction contract with KJ Woods Construction for an amount not to exceed $330,008 for a Del Monte Boulevard sewer main replacement project. And we approved an amendment to a professional with Harrison Associates for an amount not to exceed $322,300 to provide construction management support for the Del Monte Sewer Replacement Project. We also approved an amendment to a Design Professional Services agreement with Wallace Court Group for an amount not to exceed $86,060 for the Del Monte Sewer Replacement Project. And I hope you're all staying isolated and healthy and enjoying your time at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Kristen?
All right. I think it's important that I, the highlights to MST are in the back of your packets, but MST, we did have an emergency meeting declaring a fiscal emergency due to this virus. And I think everybody should know that MST remains committed to providing safe, reliable, efficient service to the communities we serve. We understand that many, especially the most vulnerable, depend on the service we provide to meet their mobility needs. Basic needs like transportation don't stop even during times like these. Should MST experience a driver shortage due to illness, health precautions or childcare challenges due to school closures, we'll be forced to reduce service. However, we will continue service on as many lines as possible. Another statement is, I want everybody to know, MST would like to assure the community and its riders that we are taking precautions to help keep employees and customers safe from the infectious and communicable diseases, including influenza and the coronavirus. MST has and will continue to utilize a hospital-grade germicide to clean and sanitize all services, surfaces within the passenger cabins fleetwide each night. The use of pressurized ammonia-based solution to power wash and disinfect passenger waiting areas at major transfer locations will continue as well and to help keep employees, customers and the public at large safe. MST has reiterated the message to the cleaning personnel about the importance of disinfecting the best fleet each night. Employees have been instructed not to report to work if they are showing fevers, yada, yada. And MST shares important information from the CDC regarding the coronavirus and strategies to avoid infection with employees on a regular basis. So I think that we're really, you know, trying to keep everything clean because that's a public place where that's how some people get around. They don't get into a car, they get on the bus. So anyway, just wanted to let everybody know that we're trying to keep things clean. That's it.
Thank you, Kristen. So it seems like a million years ago, but I went to Yosemite for Yosemite's policymakers conference. I have a trip report that I will ask to be put in next month's minutes. Additionally, I am following Vice Mayor Clark's recommendation we got last meeting and submitted the TMC highlights. That all feels very long time ago. Since the coronavirus has kind of made itself known, many of you are on my email list and seeing the regular communications. And I'm holding community campfires. We will be doing an arts and culture meeting sometime over the next week, becoming very familiar with Zoom and getting as many of our folks onto Zoom as possible. So we'll be having a few more how-to Zooms coming up over the next couple of weeks to make sure people can use this venue not only for important meetings that you may be a part of, but also communicating with your family. So I'd like to thank the staff, Dino, Kim and Karen for their flexibility, their humor, and staying the course during this time. It means a lot to the community that they are there. And just like always, just from their kitchen rather than from City Hall. So thank you. And lastly, I just want to thank our community. Dino and I were having a conversation this afternoon and how blessed we really are. Everyone, each day, I either go and I sit somewhere and watch all the people walk by or I literally drive every street to see who's out and about, whether they're getting into their cars or sitting on their front porches. And everyone is sheltering in place and observing the six-foot physical distancing. So it is inspiring to see how we're all coming together in this unprecedented time to keep each other healthy. So thank you for that. That is all I have. Moving on to correspondence, I just want to mention what Vice Mayor Clark and I just mentioned that are board highlights. First, for the MST board and second, for the TMC board are part of our council packet. So if you'd like to read those, that's where they are. Next item, closed session. We will not have one this evening. And the next meeting is April 28th, Tuesday, of course, at 6:00 PM. If for some reason something happens and there's an emergency meeting, you of course will be notified and I hope you will join us for that. On that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you. Bye.